Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're right on time. Don't like to keep you waiting. This is the July 21st first open work session with Wycomico County Council and we have the Wycomico County Board of Education here and Administration. Glad to have everybody here. Please, whoever is going to speak, we'd like you to be in the chairs here. And however you want to arrange it, as far as, you know, individuals, and you can certainly bring up all those chairs if you want to. We can pull that whole two rows up front. However you want to do it. Some like Mrs. Handy, I know are a little shy and may not want to come to the front desk. Mr. Algeyer, you're new, we definitely would want to hear something from you.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. Yeah, whatever works for, you know, however you all want to do it, it's good to see you, glad to hear.
Good job. Good start.
Great. Thanks for being here. We're anxious to see, you know, where you, where everyone's headed with your, with your new members as well and how things are developing. The breakdown, I guess, of the Board of Education itself and how you're, I guess you're restructuring some, is that not correct?
Locations, definitely. Locations, which are pretty nice to have most people together.
So, I'll let you, if you'd like, I'll let you take the lead.
Well, first thing on the agenda is West Salisbury Elementary School.
We have to keep giving you mics, guys, sorry. Someday we'll get this situated.
No, we're fine.
Okay.
And we're looking at a new school at that site. We're looking at it being 350 students. As we've noted before, we'd prefer to have a 650 core and if we build a 350 student school, because it saves a huge amount of money for us on an annual basis in operations. Those are dollars that were put straight in the classroom. And I, I think the teachers and the instructional assistants, all those folks are really, you know, where we need to put our money. But I respect that the interests of the council are to have a 350 core as well as a 350 body. I also know that, you know, it's on the same site and that there's an interest in having a 15% reduction in the costs. So we're looking at, you know, architecturally and engineering wise, how can that be done? You know, what are the, what are the give backs and what are the things that you have to deal with on that? There also is a suggestion to go to visit a new school that was constructed recently using more metal. I'm not sure exactly what the school looks like, but we're looking to set up a tour of that site and see, you know, what did they do? What kind of services do they provide? What kind of security do they require to see, you know, how applicable it might be for us to be able to use that as one guideline for being able to save a few bucks.
Where's that, Joe?
Monarch, Montgomery.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
Okay.
Is that in Runns?
It's in Laurel, Maine.
Okay. We haven't set up the tour yet.
Okay.
And Brian can talk about it a little bit more, or Dr. Thompson has a little bit more information on that.
Okay.
Didn't know if you, Matt had said, these A, B, and C are things that Matt had asked to be put on the agenda. So, our question is, how should we proceed? You know, the cost of the project, core space, and other, are we all in agreement that we need to move forth with the 350? What size core space, whether it's 350 or 650? And then, it actually wasn't in the letter, but is that what your directive is, is to do a 15% decrease in the cost?
Yes. Yes. I mean personally, it'd be really great to be able to, to set a core for, for growth, just in case it develops as originally planned. It'd be nice to do that. I don't know how easy it is to establish that and then to anticipate expansion of the, the rest of the school, if need be.
I think the design of the school is going to be really critical, so that if we're able to expand later, say 10 years from now, we have to do that, you know, from the 350 to the 650.
Right.
I mean, I think that's critical. Core space is always nice to have that already established, but, but the design of the school, and Brian can speak to that, you know, we have to do the design of the school so that it can be also be expanded and...
Yeah, because the course, right now, the core space is in the middle. And of course, you're done. It'd be good if it were an exterior, knowing you could expand it out later if it had to be.
And that's one of the things we look at as an architectural solution, to see what we can do in terms of...
You didn't like Brian.
One of the things we can do in terms of planning for the growth, by moving those type of areas to the perimeters of the building. So, that'll be a strategy we look at.
And it may be, I mean, that may be the beginning of something that we may need to consider with all schools. You know, because, you know how, I mean, we're, I think we finally came to a consensus that expansion is probably better than replacement. And that it may be a new, sort of a new trend, and this could be the first school where we actually start putting that into the mix ahead of time.
Actually Bennett Middle.
Bennett Middle. Okay, great.
Yeah, we do have, the core spaces can be either expanded and we put the two wings on end, so Brian did have that forethought on that.
Good.
But it's, it's also more than just the space. For instance, at Bennett Middle School, the capacity of the physical plant is designed to such that it can accommodate the growth without having to go back in and retrofit or upsize the mechanical plant, the wells, the things that drive the facility. So, as opposed to just the spatial characteristics of the facility, it's also the systems that, that are upsize for the future growth.
That's, yeah, I hadn't thought of that part. That's why I'm not doing this.
I guess the question I have, you know, we, we didn't have anybody today, but at a lot of our council meetings, you know, we have the folks up there, you know, we need a new school, when are we going to get this? And, you know, so we, you know, going back and forth with the letters and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we're all agreed on, you know, kind of these parameters laid out here. So, what is the timeframe we're looking at then, in terms of, you know, you know, let's say next council meeting, we have someone sitting up there, when are we going to, you know, when's this going to happen? What, what can we tell them is, you know, the next steps in the plan in, you know, one, two, four years down the line?
Yes.
Lots of steps. We're proud, Frank.
We, we, we're probably a year and a half out from the original schedule now. So, whereas we were looking at probably opening in August of 2018, we're probably looking at now an opening of probably 2019, or maybe mid-year 2019.
So, August of 2019?
Yeah. That's my best estimate at this point. And that may take a little bit of fast tracking to meet those dates. We had hoped to have planning approval last year, but we didn't get the planning approval. So, if we can get all the stars aligned this time around, we're all in consensus of what it is we're doing, we're going to go back in for planning approval of the state this year and we'll put everything back on track for, for that.
So, do you have an idea when you're going to officially break ground?
Not at, not at this time, no.
Not yet?
Not yet.
I know I...
I need to reassemble the team and get everybody back, you know, and put all this thing back together again. I mean, we didn't even know exactly what we were going to do to this, you know, and that's why we're trying to, to make sure we all understand what it is we're going to set the crews off to, to go design and do for us at this point, so.
Brian, has your team stayed intact from last year? Has your team stayed intact from last year?
I couldn't.
Has your team stayed intact from last year?
Well, we had two final firms that were going to come on board with us, but we did not select the firms to have them start the design work until we knew what it was we were going to do. So, the next step in this process is to invite those two firms to submit to the RFP and get them on track with the defined scope, which I think it's a 350 school now onsite. All those parameters can now be fixed, so.
Do the schools have to have, like Bennett Middle School, all that green stuff, the LED stuff?
If you're taking state money, they do, yes.
Now, isn't it just a percentage of that, though?
Well, you have to, if you take state funds, you have to, at this time, at least meet a LEED Silver Certification.
Okay, that's what we did at Bennett?
Yep. Yep.
Well, it'd be interesting to see. I, I'd like to see it moving forward finally. I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that you're looking at being creative maybe with a metal school.
Well, we use, we use a lot of metal right now in a, you know, exterior surfaces. We want to actually see what the other building looks like and see how it performs and, and see how it goes, because we're just one part of the whole process. The School Building Commission, the Board of Education, and the state, because the state pays 97% of the allowable construction costs.
Right.
That's the actual bricks, mortar, stuff like that.
Right.
And the state's still going to pay the 97% for this project now?
If, once they approve funding, once they give us planning approval, that's future commitments that they would do that.
We're the only one in the state that gets that amount of money, percentage wise?
Uh, I think Somerset's at 100.
They got 100%, that's exactly right.
We're next in line.
Is there a chance that you would entertain the core being 650 for additions later on? You know...
You mean allowing for expansion, you mean? A building to allow for expansion?
Yes.
That's, that's, I mean, it's quite a bit, it's quite a ways out.
No, what I'm saying is, looking, putting in like Bennett Middle is, the core for additions later on, if needed, because everybody was looking for 650, okay? Now it's 350.
Right.
Is there a possibility that we could still put in the core areas for 650? You know, for expansion later on, build it for 350, but being able to add on like we can at Bennett Middle? I mean, is there a possibility?
I, I can't see why, why everybody wouldn't be open to that.
I mean, we don't have the cost of that now, I know you'd need to know the cost.
It always comes, yeah, it always comes down to the numbers. I think that's more than anything.
But you are open with those figures.
Yeah, I think that was just a difference in strategy as to what the 650 was going to be, you know, what the, the purpose of the 650 was. And a lot of that was based, I believe, on your redistricting plans, which have sort of been put to, you know, put on a back burner. But we know that has to come back again. And if that is a valid plan in itself and, and in rethinking it, it's needed, that may still be the school done, I, I know.
Well, I mean, I mean, speaking for myself, my primary concern is cost. So, you know, I mean, you know, how it gets designed, I mean, you know, I think the, in the council, we're kind of in charge of the money with the executive and, and that's, that's at least where I look. And, you know, if you can, if you can do something for about the same price and save money, you know, by building, using different materials, I mean, that's, I think, again, I won't speak for myself, but for me, the bottom line was the cost of it, so.
I think he was asking for some little room on the cost.
Well, file, design file.
But, you know, I didn't want, I didn't want the door to be closed.
Never hurts to ask, yeah, no kidding. Yeah, very, very true.
Okay, so we know our direction on West Salisbury. Do you have any questions?
Well, I, I guess, you know, just so we, I know we're going to look at the, the Monarch prototype. And I guess we'll have to report back once we assemble the team and we run some new numbers, because the numbers we had were based in the ed specs that were done in 2014. So, we'll have to look at that, look at the size, look at the square footage, and see, you know, with the 15% reduction, what we can actually do.
Okay.
It may be, it may be a no-go from the, from the start if we can't bring all those parameters together, but we'll take a look at it and see.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a question that Old Stoffus used to ask. Excuse me, I say, I'm going to ask a question that Old Stoffus used to ask, and I've heard him ask it many times. Why isn't schools on the, in Wycomico County built out of wood? Being we produce wood right here in the county, in the state, out of something that we produce? Is there a reason they're not designed to be built out of wood?
Well, I think, I think they...
The cost or safety or what?
I think they can be on smaller schools. It's probably something that you could do, but it has to do with the building codes and the flammability type of woods. I mean, you've got to do some things different when you use lumber or timber for construction in terms of compartmentalization and life safety codes that you wouldn't have to do with non-flammable materials. But it's, it's not that it's impossible, it's just different.
Is it more costly?
Uh, offhand, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Or is it less expensive? I guess that's...
Uh, I don't know. Offhand, I think we ran some studies a few years ago, but if you use, I think at the time when those were done, we were looking at metal studs and, and non-flammable types of materials for school construction, as opposed to using salt-treated materials and those type of things. But it's something you can take a look at.
You had, Transportation, I guess, was...
Yeah, can we back up? Though I did want to ask, I had sent you information after our last work session. You wanted to see the Northgate lease and information about the homeless, the McKinney Vento Act. Did, were there any questions on any, any of that, that anybody had? I sent a pretty thick packet of all that information.
Right. Oh, yeah, pretty much so. Thanks.
Transportation, Matt had left a message that there was a question about transportation. So, and we did just purchase a new bus, so I didn't know what those questions were. I did provide you, the first handout in your packet is, or the second handout, I'm sorry, is out of our budget, page 252, and it provides the school bus contractors' rates, last year's, this, this year's, and what the percent increase is. So, and one of the questions also was, what impact does the opening of Bennett Middle School have on our transportation costs?
Right.
And there really has been, I talked to Rick Smoke this morning, they're still in the midst of doing all the routes for Bennett Middle School. And what has happened where middle school, Bennett Middle and Bennett High did used to ride the bus together, now that they're separated, the routes will be separated. So, for anybody who, whose route has been reduced, they're trying to find other opportunities. He said pretty much it, it's going to be a wash, but there are a few will increase in miles in time and a few will decrease. Any of those that decrease, they're looking for the opportunity, say, to do our pre-K in the middle of the day where they get extra money to be able to, to do that. And so, as best we can, everybody's going to be home or pretty close. I'm not sure if there was any, any other questions on that.
Good question.
With, with the purchase of this bus, how many buses does the board?
Seventeen.
Does that, does that include the smaller versions of vans or whatever?
No, they're included.
So, you have 17 full-size buses?
Yes, some are used as spares and some are used, like, for example, we talked about going up to the Ridge School and, you know, how we have to transport kids in that manner, but some are used as spares and some are used on the minimum routes. Each time, a minimum, what we're finding, as we shared with you before, is that as the buses go through their 15 years, a lot of people are striving to get financing and aren't able to get financing. And so, when that happens, we are, we're trying to take the minimum route and run that and give the contractors the more lucrative routes, because we want them to stay in business, obviously.
Where are these buses stored? Are they all stored together?
Over Jersey Road.
Jersey Road.
Yeah. And also, another reason I put that in there was to show you, I, I don't know if you've ever seen this page before, but there's a PVA allowance allotment, and I know Mr. Davis can explain this probably even clearly, more clearly than I can, but each, each contractor for the bus gets a PVA, what we call PVA. So, for example, the PVA is $16,755. So, every year for those 15 years, the bus contractor gets that amount of money, plus other, other things listed on the sheet. And so, over the course of the life of the bus, we, we give them a PVA that more than double pays for what they paid for the bus. Say they paid $100,000. By the time, if they kept it for 15 years, if you took that $16,755 and multiplied it by 15 years, they actually, over the course of the life of the bus, are paid about $250,000 for that bus. Now, they have to pay for the maintenance and they have to pay for repairs and that sort of thing, but this schedule might be interesting to you and, and I'm sure Bruce or Ernie or Desmond could come at one point and go through all the details if you wanted to hear something further about that. So, we did need, we had several routes that were given up this year. In fact, I brought a sheet on that. And so, the way we were able to fund that, I didn't know if that was the question. What we do is, any buses that are in their last five years of life of their 15, we give them the opportunity to say, we want to replace our bus this year. And so, when it comes down to it, some of them can't get financing. So, we did budget for many of our contractors, I think it was 10 or 12 of our contractors, to get new buses. It turned out that there were several, seven, I think, that, that chose not or couldn't get financing or whatever the case was to do that. So, if we had budgeted that money and they chose not to get a new bus this year when they were eligible, then we were able to use that budgeted money because we didn't have a contractor to take, take over.
You budgeted the money to buy a bus or finance?
We bought a bus, yes.
To buy a bus?
Just this month, yes, we bought a bus. And that bus will, will take over one of the minimum routes.
How many, how many routes are you running now?
We have, how many total routes?
Right.
Um, I think it's 150, around...
No, I'm talking about this school board and stuff, I'm sorry.
Oh, of those 17 buses?
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly. Eight or nine probably are, are routes that we're, we're taking. We have 16 minimum routes still left. We don't anticipate taking all of those, but what it does happen is, you know, contractors do give up, you know, if they find it's not a very lucrative. Rick said, I did speak to him about that, he said, there's a potential for four to five to be going out within the next two years of the minimum routes. We hope that we would be able to find contractors who would take them, but if they can't, that, that's a very rough estimate of what we might have to, to take over. And we have had to buy two or three buses recently, just because we haven't been able to get contractors to take those. And again, if it's a, if it's a minimum route, we try, we take it and try to give them the more, the longer routes, the longer hours and longer miles.
So, you're saying all your buses are minimum routes?
All of our buses?
Mm-hmm.
I think they are, but I would have to go back and check with Desmond.
I think you should check, because I don't think all of them.
You don't think they're all minimum routes?
No.
Okay, I can go back and check.
Um, for the buses you buy, that does, do you then hire someone to drive? I mean, how does that work? Is it a full-time employee, part-time?
We hire contract, uh, we contract with, with people, bus drivers.
All right. But they're not, are they, so they're contractors and they're not employees?
They're not contractors, but they're contractual employees.
Okay, so they're employees of the board, so, okay.
Yep. And in some cases, if it's special, we have to hire also an assistant.
You said, um, that contractors aren't able to get financing?
Some of them aren't, yeah.
Have you guys understand the reason why they're not getting financing? Because these minimum routes aren't paying and these banks know that contractor with somebody's, these minimum runs will be in bankruptcy in three to five years, because over the years, we haven't been paying the money to keep up with the cost of these buses. And that's the problem. It's not that they can't get financing. These banks is aware of what these buses are making and what they're costing. That's the problem. We're not keeping up with the cost of living and the cost of expenses of these buses. You mentioned the PVA. Yes, you get it for the life of the bus, but right now, that PVA, you get a brand-new bus, isn't covering the cost of that payment. So, you're taking from your mileage and your hourly to supplement, to make that payment. So, the bus is paid for in five to six years, so then you got to catch up from what you lost those five, six years, which give you probably another three to five years to catch up. And then, you're out of your warranty, so then your maintenance kicks in. So, that PVA really get used. You mentioned $200,000, it gets used, definitely. And it's below what the state average is for Wycomico County. So, we can't just say that they can't get financing, you have to get the whole picture of why they're not getting financed.
And we do try to take as many of the minimum routes, you know, for contractor. When, when we buy a bus, we try to use it on a minimum route as so that the, as best we can, so that the contractor's spending the longer routes. But, you know, if you take the $16,755 and if you finance, and a bus is about $100,000. So, if you finance that over five years, 16, 7 is about $85,000 in five years. And so, that's about $15,000 that's not covered by the PVA, which is true, in the first five years, but then for the next 10 years of the life of the bus, they still get the $16,700 every year. So, over the life of the bus, say if I bought a bus today, I, over 15 years, I would get $251,000 for that bus. But again, they need that for it too.
Right.
It, it is a tight squeeze. You're exactly right, in the first five years, but over the life of the bus, they get $250,000 for that bus.
And I wouldn't...
It is difficult.
I wouldn't even think to micromanage what you're doing. By buying the buses yourselves instead of paying more through the PVA, you think it's the cost savings overall is benefiting the county and the Board of Education?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
We, we did a study on that.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Actually, 2013, 14. Over the life of 15 years, if we bought a, if we bought it outright, like we did with this particular bus?
Sure.
Over the life of 15 years, it's about $327,000 savings for the Board of Ed, although our goal is not to give in the bus business, but to give in the contractors. But, but you're right.
Okay, so the life, when you buy, get a contract, you take over a bus. Where does that PVA go?
Keep it.
We just don't have to pay it out.
You keep it?
So, it is a savings. If you look at it that way, it's a savings for us because we don't have to pay it out to a contractor.
Have you...
Although we're striving not to have to do that, we want the contractors to take the routes.
Included into the main. See, what I'm having a problem with is because throughout the state and the country, counties and states are giving back buses because of that reason. They can't afford them. And I just can't see how Wycomico can do it. And you got bigger counties like Carroll, Anarundale, Hartford are giving back buses. But we are, you're taking over to the contractors. I mean, right where Dave Reeves came from, when he came here, Carroll County had 12 buses. And they knew it was not efficient, they gave them back. They don't have any more own buses. It's just interesting to see your study compared to everyone else's study.
We'd be glad to work session if you'd like.
Well, I mean, if you, you can, you have that information, if you want to, but...
Send it to you.
Councilman Davis, take a look at that and he can certainly review it and, never hurts to exchange information. See what, see what might be...
That savings, that 300 and some thousand dollar savings, is that before or after the maintenance and the infrastructure that you have to have for buildings and maintenance to take care of the buses and all that?
Yeah, it doesn't include any structures on our, yeah, that's true.
Doesn't include taking care of parking areas or buildings, so.
Okay.
So, that, that savings probably isn't...
Would be diminished, exactly. Okay. Anything else on Transportation?
Anybody? We're good.
And then the other topic that Matt had shared with Danny was, if you wanted to have a conversation about the legislation board.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're in the, we're in the midst of, of course, we had a, a very productive meeting, I think, with the stakeholders and got a good consensus for what the options might be.
Can't hear you.
Oh, really?
No.
We got a, a good consensus from a group of stakeholders as far as, you know, what the options might be, how many different options we need to consider. We want to make sure that when we do the public hearings, that the public themselves, the public itself has a very, good understanding of what all the options might be, because that seems to be the, the one issue now, is not everybody even knows what the alternatives might be. And it was suggested, I believe it, it might have been Michelle Wright that had said, well, we need to educate the public on this. And I have talked to Greg Bassett about that and he's on board with trying to help us through his newspaper, get, get a lot of information out to the public, such as, you know, whether it's going to be five and two, whether it's going to be appointed, whether it's going to be, you know, appointed by the governor, appointed by the executive, whether it's going to be just five, whether it's, you know, the hybrid, elected. I think there's about seven different combinations of what we could do. And that way, when we do schedule the public hearings, which we are going to do within And that way, uh, when we do schedule the public hearings, which we are going to do within the next, between now and the next meeting, establish those exact days, um, the public will be more educated when they come to, to speak about what they're, you know, what they wanna see done. So it's, it's moving forward.
Is there anything you need us to do?
Um, I guess we could, that's a good, that's a good point, I, I would imagine that once we get something put together, we, you could, um, we could give it to you, and you could get that information out to the parents, that would be really helpful.
I mean, and also, I mean, if you, you know, if members of the current board, you know, have any insight into issues that we may not consider, like at our, our last meeting, mentioned maybe like only with five members, and then Robin Holloway brought it up, she's like, well, you might have trouble getting a quorum if you only have five members. So, you know, s- certain issues that, you know, we wouldn't necessarily think of, but, you know, they're kind of practical issues about in terms of numbers and, you know, things like that, you know, we, you know, we, if we're gonna go forward and resist something to people, we need it to be the best possible proposal for people to, you know, vote yes or no on, y- you know, I mean, so, you know, any sort of insight like that would be helpful too, I would think, so, you know, just kind of the mechanics, the day-to-day, so.
And, and not only the, the, the different options, but even the pros and cons, you know, the perceived pros and cons of both. Trying to be, you know, fair about it all, 'cause, you know, so many people say, well, you know, if you have an elected board, you're not gonna have quality people. Well, we put that on the list as one of, you know, one of the suggested, you know, negatives of it. So, just trying to open it up a little bit more.
Do you have a listing of those seven, uh, option, combinations that are being discussed?
I, I can get it for you, yeah, we, when we put it all together, we'll get it, we'll get it up to you, okay?
'Cause then we can, we can actually take a look at it and put pros and cons.
Yeah, 'cause-
Okay.
Most people now just think it's a done deal, and like we told them at the ele- first meeting, it's not a done deal. That's why we're having these meetings, I think we're gonna have three, three out in the public, and we want the people to come and tell us what they want, and we'll go from there.
Anything else on Mr. Creamers' list?
No.
I believe, Matt.
No, sorry, really wasn't my list either.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was just trying to come up with thoughts that, uh, I, I heard mentioned, and thought might be brought up.
Great, thank you.
I'm, I'm not the author.
Um, we had some updated items for you, if you wish. Uh, first off, has Bennett Middle School opening and rededication, got a card for that. The transition's going well, families are over there. The students are gonna go on Thursday, they'll be getting, uh, waves of students that are doing registration and other activities, and are getting their tour. And I interviewed a group of middle schoolers today, and every one of the Bennett Middle School students said, I always say, what are you excited about this year and everything, everyone said, it's the new building, we wanna be the first class in the new building. They wanna be the first class to tour the new building, they were, they're excited, they said, we won't be the only ones that are lost, everybody's gonna be lost. This is the wisdom of sixth grader, so, these kids are pretty savvy, and they, they're, they're delighted, so, thank you for your support for it. And the move is going well, I think we took every, every truck that, uh, United Van Lines had in the area, and every worker that they had, they went through fifteen cases of water for their workers to load the building. If you think about how, how big it was, and they're, they're excited, and I, I apologize to anybody in the area that was trying to get moved that week. Yeah. 'Cause we, we, we pretty much got everybody that they had.
So, so that was taking the stuff that was in the old school to the new one, so, I mean, how, I mean, I don't even know if you have a rough estimate, how much stuff was, you know, being reused from the old school, how much is new, I mean, do you have any, I mean, I don't know if you-
Um, as far as books and instructional materials, virtually all of it is going over. Uh, the, the light rays and some of that sort of thing is, that's going over, that's already there. Uh, as far as desks and stuff, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know, Mr. Frey, if you know that answer or not?
Uh, there was a s- several meetings, a salvage operation that they went through and identified, uh, certain things that were gonna be repurposed, uh, sent to other schools, some of those things were gonna be repurposed and sent to the Bennett Middle School. So, I, I can't really quantify it exactly for you, but there was part of the, the process in terms of repurposing and reusing a lot of the elements in the school, which couldn't, you know, what we could reuse, and we do that whenever we do a school like that.
It's going, it's going well, and we really wanna get you over there so you can see it, if you haven't already been. It's, uh, it's really beautiful, it's gonna be a wonderful experience for those kids. Uh, James in Bennett Phase Three, uh, the two questions that have come up for me is why the, the big hole on the South Division, and why the big hole in the front lawn? And there are two different answers, the big hole by South Division is a big hole, and that's for stormwater management, and I, Brian can go into the technical things on that, uh, they just said, don't, don't worry about those silt fences, they do know why they're put, and they're there. The other one is, is that, now, and you'll have to probably explain better, is that there was, there was a number of, uh, there was an amount of construction debris that did not get filtered out when they, uh, did the replacement dirt for when they, you know, made the, the lawn in front of Bennett High School. And so they're really only digging down about ten inches or something?
Six inches.
Six inches, but they're piling it up in big piles, and they'll take it out, and they'll bring in, you know, good new dirt. Um, but the, the piles look really high, but when you're driving by the street, you can't see that the, the hole is only six inches deep, but it's pretty wide. So, that's, those are the two questions that have been my radar screen for that building. And the hole, and the big hole in front of Parkside, that's the city's project of replacing a, a large pump station.
Sewer lift pump station that the city has, that's gonna be a year-long project over there.
See the gates and the fencing and all that, it's gonna be there a year.
So when will the, when do you think, when do, when are they projecting it'll all be done, the track will be in?
That's a Brian question.
For the Phase Three?
Yes.
Uh, I think we're shooting for September, uh, not, not next September, but the following September, so.
Not this September?
No, no.
At sixteen?
I think they're looking at mid-year of sixteen, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to double-check that for you, but I think that's what we're looking at.
That's curious.
It has to, the reason I don't know is because I know there were some alternates having to do with what they were doing with the fields, and it all has to do with making the fields serviceable and usable in that schedule. I can report back to you.
That's curious.
Yeah.
It's on schedule.
Good.
We've got a, we've got a great team working on it. Um, the North Gate Central Office move, about a third of the staff are moved over now. Um, they're, as we speak, they're literally hauling boxes in and out.
Okay.
Um, out of Central Office and into the North Gate, uh, facility. Uh, I, people seem pleased, I was in the first wave that moved over along with Dr. Townsend and Dr. Handy, and a bunch of other folks. Uh, we're having meetings over there, some of the meetings are still, we're gonna have a period of transition where meetings may be held at one side or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna continue having board meetings at this current Central Office site at one-on-one Long Avenue for at least a while, and then we'll make adjustments as appropriate, but it saves us money if we can do it on a phased basis.
What, what happens to Long Avenue?
Long Avenue will become the, uh, infants and toddlers and-
Child find.
Child find, so that will be continuing, uh, service for us.
Is there a concern as to whether that could realistically be retro-
Surplus?
Fi- uh, retrofitted for kids, for little kids, whether that would work? Whether the fountains or whatever it was, it was, that might have been in there.
We're paying, um, about forty-five to fifty thousand for rental for infants and toddlers over in Northwood. And so, it, that and child find, and tho- that staff fit perfectly into the HR and the instruction departments at Central, at one-on-one Long Avenue. So it was, it was a lot better cost-savings-wise to stop that, at least August thirty-first is the last day of that lease, so we'll be moving those two departments over into Long Avenue.
What's gonna happen to the auditorium?
They're gonna, it's still gonna be used for, um, like, uh, Vince's, Vince Pavick's department, he'll do a lot of their, uh, new teacher in-service training and orientation.
So you're not taking it out, good.
We're also using, um, the other side, the administrative side in back-end finance, as we, I'm calling it Scan Central, but that's where, uh, all the things that didn't have to go, but could be scanned into a document management program are going to be housed in there, and so people will go in there and use a computer and scanner to get some of that electronically, um, scanned.
We're, we've been in the process of converting to electronic records for a while, uh, several years, and we're really amping it up. Uh, we've, we've got to get out of the paper records business for a number of reasons. And, uh, you know, we see the medical business doing that, see the commercial business doing that, and it's time for us to do it as well.
What, did you have an estimate on the renovations on Long Avenue?
We don't have to renovate, they get it right into the offices, yeah, there's not, very little, little need.
We have to reconfigure some of the systems furniture and move some furniture around, but we don't have to really do any major retrofit.
There was enough furniture that, some of the furniture went with them to North Gate, but then, in, uh, between Bennett Middle that went to the warehouse, there's, there's enough furniture for everybody, so, it'll be very, it'll be more time of putting the desks in and that sort of thing, but there won't be money that needs to be spent.
Good. What is the cost for renovations to North Gate?
I don't remember.
I don't, I don't recall offhand, but we can give you a report at the next meeting, we had some budget estimates, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, we're still collecting all the costs for that.
You got teacher salary comparisons here?
Yeah, I added that, uh, somehow it came through to me, um, somebody at, at Central, and I thought it was a good, uh, I, so I asked Vince to put together a comparison of Worcester County to Wycomico County, 'cause I just thought that might be of interest to you all. Um, so this is actually Worcester County's, uh, teachers, just their teacher salary scale, and then, uh, Vince inserted Wycomico County as a comparison. And what you'll see on there is that, uh, as far as the first and second year teacher that has a bachelor's degree, uh, we're slightly higher than they are, and then the yellow one that has a master's equivalency in the first year of teaching were slightly higher, but throughout the rest of the scale, and you can see it stops at ten because they have to have their master's degree after ten years. So if they don't, then they're, you know, that, that's part of their employment requirement. One other thing, it, so, if, uh, if you're comparing apples to apples and people on the same scale, this is what, uh, as far as years of service, uh, we are above them in three different spots, but they're above us in all the rest. Worcester County, though, is still two steps behind, um, you, we were able in the past two or three years to bring our people home so that they're on the step that they belong, but Worcester County is still, um, so their teachers are still two, two steps. We're trying to catch up, we're trying to catch up. But I thought this might be of interest to you all, it, it came up somewhere, and so I thought, well, we'll add it in if you're interested.
What about, what about the other benefits, as opposed to just salary?
Um, well, they're, of course, they have, uh, good health insurance, their retirement benefits are actually better than ours as far as health insurance, they pay ninety percent, while we pay seventy percent.
That's ninety percent of a family, not, and we pay seventy percent of the single, that's thousands and thousands, thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so they do, they do have slightly better benefits in retirement.
We get, um, what would be the chances of getting the numbers on who would be leaving Wycomico to go to Somerset or Worcester, or who would be leaving, um, Worcester or Somerset to come to Wycomico for his teacher? Well, I was talking to a teacher the other day that left Worcester for Wycomico because the pay was so much better. And she did mention the benefits, she says, but the, and she, she's very experienced, you know, I think she's been teaching for fifteen maybe years or so. And I was also talking to another teacher that left Worcester County to go to Somerset, um, and I know you can't get those numbers, but, um, eh, eh, for lower pay, but, um, for, she liked, who ran Somerset better, apparently, I won't get into that. But that, but that means, what that means is, um, pay isn't always everything.
Right.
And that wasn't to her, so, um,
Now, what very-
The atmosph- the, the atmosphere you're running in, you know, you're working in, it's got a lot of difference, and sometimes pay just isn't the whole picture, you know, so, I'm sorry.
Um, and actually, what you said may be true about the teacher coming from Worcester to Wycomico, because they were four steps behind. And just this year, they, they caught up on two steps, and now they're two steps behind, so, you know, when you look at over four steps, that could be as much as six to eight thousand dollars, so it could be that they get paid more when they come to Wycomico because they're gonna be put on the step that they actually belong.
Apparently, according to this person, there was more than just them that was coming to Wycomico from Worcester in the past year or so, so, I, I just thought that would be an inter- I mean, we all, we've always heard we're losing teachers, we're losing teachers in other counties, and then, and I had these people telling me this, and I'm thinking, you know, it's not what I've been hearing.
We can try to get, uh, some numbers, we do ask, uh, when their staff leave, we try to ascertain, you know, why, why they're leaving, whether it's relocation or whatever, but we can, um, try to take a look at the-
They're still spending a lot of time with it, I, I just think it's important to know that, a lot of times, it's not just money that drives people.
Sure.
You know, sometimes it is, but.
Kathy, these are all, this is union contract, so these are all, uh, union-
Association contracts.
Association contracts, sorry.
They correct me on a regular basis.
They do, so, uh, this is not something you really have a whole lot to say over, uh, it, because it is all negotiated, and-
It is all negotiated.
Negotiated, how often?
Every year.
Every year?
Okay.
Yeah, well, at least in our county, salary, uh, you, um, it goes on a rotating basis, you can do one article one year, two articles the next year, and then the contract is fully open the third year. So for all of our three different units, it goes in a rotating cycle on opposite years, but, but every year, salary is negotiated.
But, and, kinda to go off, what John was saying, um, so, you understand the steps and the degrees, and, you know, graduate hours, things like that. Um, and I had mentioned this to the superintendent about, um, you know, some districts are moving towards compensation based more on quality measures, or, you know, however that, you know, however they measure in terms of how well the teacher does, in terms of raising student achievement. And I understand that that's something you have to negotiate with the, uh, association, um, and, and there's a lot of resistance to that. I mean, is that something that's even on your radar in terms of using quality measures in terms of compensation, instead of just, um, purely hours, you know, you know, years of service, or, you know, whether you have a degree or not? 'Cause degree, you know, if you, you have a degree, that doesn't mean you're a better teacher necessarily.
That, that is really difficult, because, um, you're talking about, uh, multiple, um, uh, people who give the ratings, and so it, you know, people think that, it, it's not on my radar screen, but I, I'll let Dr. Handy talk about that, because she's been involved quite a bit with the teacher evaluation committee, but that is really, really difficult when you do pay for performance rather than the steps, but you want to talk about-
First of all, no, it has not been on our radar screen, because just as Dr. Townsend indicated, it is a very complex, of course, um, uh, situation now with, uh, teacher evaluations being based on, uh, student performance as well as, of course, professional practices. And because of that, and because it is a new process, this is just our second year going through that process, the, and we do have to negotiate with the, uh, two, of course, associations for this evaluation, including, number one, the, uh, Teachers Association, um, of course, as well as the Administrators Association. So because it has to be negotiated, and because this process is relatively new, and working very well, by the way, there has not been discussion in terms of, of course, um, compensation, uh, regarding, of course, student performance, but the evaluation is based on that, but no money is attached to it.
I've got a question. Yeah, Dr. Townsend, and, um, I should know this, uh, you mentioned, uh, master's equivalent versus a master's degree. After ten years, you stated that the teacher has to have a master's degree.
Or equivalent.
Okay, you didn't say that, you said, so that's why I was asking the question.
Or equivalent.
Um, and, and I know what, um, my colleague was saying about the, the teacher, or, or the education doesn't really make you a good teacher, and that's true. And then you, on the other hand, you have students that don't wanna learn, and you can't teach them if they don't wanna learn. But wi- with teachers ending up with a master's degree, you end up with some good quality teachers.
Yes, we do.
We do.
So that's, that's a good practice, a good standard, having a master's degree to look forward to. 'Cause they're always working on education, every, every year they're taking classes, so, you have to give them credit for that.
Yes.
But although the, um, although there's not pay for performance, a big portion of the evaluation is based on student data.
Yes.
Yes.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, so that, you, you know, it's, it's kinda tricky, but they've got a good job in getting it done.
If you, if you look at high-performing classes, and you look at, on a state basis, and on a coun- and on a county basis, right here in Wycomico County, and you look at kids taking advanced placement or honors courses, and then taking the tests and scoring well on them, we are in the top of the heap on that, uh, as a state, and we've gotten awards as far as the percentage of growth that we've had in, and the percentage of kids participating in the test, and scoring a three or better on the AP test, which is a mark of, you know, the quality of the product that we're producing.
And we have a lot of students that are offered quite a, a lot of, uh, scholarships.
Scholarship money, yes.
And, uh, ten to five hundred.
Um, if, if a teacher doesn't make, um, their master's equivalent after ten years, what happens to them?
They're on probation.
They're on-
They're, they are on probation, they're not cut automatically, how long's that probation?
It's usually for a year, two years, until they do get their, uh, appropriate courses to meet their certification.
So there is some leniency there?
Yes, yes, and they, there's leniency, and there's also, of course, our HR department does an excellent job informing those individuals way ahead of time so that they can be acquiring those courses for certification.
But, um, family obligations and-
Yes, things happen.
Other issues are considered, so, good.
But there have been instances where they have just refused to get it.
And I understand.
And we do have to let them go.
Thank you.
Um, you were talking about the performance data, you know, and that, now, is that available to the public?
No.
No.
Okay.
If you wanna look at, if you wanna look at gross numbers in terms of the percentage that completed and blah, 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 that's, that's a, that's a public document, but all the other stuff is personal, that's, that's confidential.
And, and I understand why that is, although, as a parent, you know, my daughter's going into first grade, you know, there's, I think, three or four different teachers she may get, you know, she may get, there may be an excellent teacher there who's doing great, and maybe, you know, one of the five percent at the bottom. As a parent, it would be, you know, it'd be nice to know, you know, who, who's, who's the better teacher, you know, I, I mean, you know, I mean, and I understand the, the problems with that, but, I'm seeing, you know, from a parent's perspective, you know, um, that, that sort of information would be, be very, would be very nice to have, but. I'll, I'll let you work that out with the association.
That will give us an opportunity to get to-
Don't hold your breath.
There'll be, that will be a lively conversation.
Sure, I'm sure.
Actually, the decision won't be made at our local state anyway, that'll be an, an apples decision.
I did wanna back up to the North Gate, we're, we will let you know, but we are- I did want to back up to the North Gate. We're, we will let you know, but we are planning on doing a, a really brief open house. You're welcome to come anytime on our tour if you'd like to, but, but we'll be letting you know.
Okay.
When is the open house?
Um, tentatively, uh, that's on, uh, three, C two. Uh, we're tentatively looking at September tenth, but, uh, we'll send formal invitations.
Okay. Then we have the school construction savings, right?
Yes.
Because I know we've touched, touched base on that before. Yeah, um, I always thought that was a great idea to, you know, take that money, those, those monies that people might feel they needed to spend before the close of the year, and in a sense, most people, um, perceive that as wasting money, just spending for the sake of spending, and dropping that into a, a fund. I don't know if the argument with, with that was the fact that maybe, and I, I don't know if those funds were restricted or not. And the concern, the reason it was removed was because they felt there needed to be control? Joe, I think maybe you're, the prior council had done that, or, or John, the prior council had, uh, removed the, um, school construction savings. Was that because they felt that there was, uh, it was unregulated in spending?
That was part of it, yes, that was part of it.
So, it wasn't a restricted fund?
Uh, it, it was a restricted fund, but, uh, the, the council had no say in the, in the, the actual application of those, of those funds.
But it was all used for capital projects, and we gave you that list.
They do, they do have the say in that we, that it was stipulated in the...
Here's Mike, uh, Bruce, Bruce could use a mic, Bruce?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Glad you decided to contribute, Bruce.
The council had stipulated at the time, the, um, passage of the, um, ordinance or the resolution, that, uh, the board could only use the funds on projects that had been in, um, a prior CIPs that had not been funded or in our capital outlay account in the current year's operating budget. That's the only way we could use any of those funds on those type of projects. And, and Mr. Kramer's correct, it is a restricted, uh, fund balance, that's correct, so.
I, I, I have no exception to what Mr., uh, what Bruce has said.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, don't take any exception to what Bruce has said. Mr. Ford's correct about having been in a capital improvements program or, or unfunded in, in a capital program, but that still left a tremendous, a tremendously broad field, and, uh, council didn't think that that was enough.
So, we could sort of...
That, that, that was only part of the issue. Yep, another part of the issue was...
Mike, fine.
Another part of the issue was that the, the money that was left at the year end was, was budgeted for current school expenses. And if that wasn't used, the, the argument was being made that that money came back to the county. But that money did not go back to the county and cannot by state law go back to the county. It stays with the Board of Education as, uh, prior fund balance, and that's one of the building blocks for the Board of Education to build their next year's budget. If that practice were continued to be used, then money allocated by the county for current operating expenses would continue to be used for current operating expenses in the subsequent year if it was, uh, a surplus in the, in the previous year. So, it, it got away from mixing current operating expense dollars from capital dollars. That was another part of the problem.
But, but it really has been extremely helpful in being able to address some small capital projects. And we're, I mean, whatever, whatever you want us to do, we'll put together, you know, or come to you and say, you know, can we use this fifty thousand on this project? Or, or whatever, but it was just so, so valuable to have that money available for projects that now are sitting, and we can't get them done.
Yeah, and I, I would think if there were some cost-saving measures that you were, that you were doing that was allowing this fund to grow, then it, it would, I wouldn't want to make it a punitive measure.
Right. It's kind of a win-win, for, you know, we don't have to keep coming back to you asking for money for some of these smaller projects that we're able to go ahead and fund with year-on-year. Did you have any...
Well, when even, when even that, we were doing that, there was still stories coming out of the board, you know, people talk, not only just, not, not only just employees of the board, but suppliers and things about the money being spent, use it before you lose it, attitude out of departments, even, you know, you think, well, if you're giving this, going to put this money back into a savings account to use prior, you know, it's going to be used for a good thing, but each department is going to, or they're still looking at it as, if I don't use this money before the end of the year, I can't budget it for the next year. So, how do you get around that? Okay, say you budget XYZ Department a hundred thousand dollars, okay, and they came in and they've only spent ninety. So, you're, how do you get around them saying, well, we want a hundred for the next year, but we only might need ninety, we only might not, excuse me, spend ninety that year? So, you got to get away from, you got to get, get that attitude away from the, from the people.
It still doesn't come back to them the next year, because we don't...
No, no, but I'm talking about them budgeting for the next year.
In fact, we, we want to step beyond that. Two years ago, we put in zero-based budget.
Yeah.
It was two years ago, to force everybody to go through every penny in their budget.
Right.
Because there's some years when you're going to need only nine, and there's some years you're going to need a hundred and ten.
But it, but it, you still hear the stories from the suppliers around town, and, you know, well, Borvett's outspending money because it's the end of the budget, you know, and so...
But there are people in, in the organization that, that don't like this and don't like that. I'll guarantee you, there are people that don't like to move the central office to North Gate.
I'm one of those.
No, I'm talking about employees that are in a, in a building that doesn't have a roof leak. You know, I mean, it's just, that's just how life is in a large organization.
Well, we, uh, I think, I think it's definitely worth revisiting, and, um, we'll, um, but we'll see if we can't get that on a, on a, on an agenda item as a work session. Not a quarterly on a, on a work session.
And if you need, if you need more information, you know, I know I said we gave you that packet two meetings ago, I think it was. If you need more information, we're happy to give it to you, just because we see such an advantage to the county council and to us in that program.
Yeah, we appreciate you saying that, too.
For the six years that I've been here, it's worked for both the board and the council. So, you know, if we could get it back, if we need to tweak it.
Right.
Set out and tweak it, but just to cut it and say, no, you can't use it. To me, it is not, you know, we should be looking out to make it work for both of us.
Okay. So, I, I will, like I said, we'll put that on the session, so we can get, get on it.
Okay, just let us know what you need.
And we're very interested in talking to you about the Joel Academy.
Okay.
So, if we can make some kind of a, a deal with, we've got a lot, we've got to look at it and, and do some tweaking, push some numbers and stuff like that. But it might be a real, a real good resource for us. It might solve a couple of different problems.
Yeah, that could. Um, I mean, if you'd like, just, I don't know what your timeframe is, but we'll entertain it anytime you'd like. And of course, you want to go through it with the executive and, and, and review what their train of thought is, but that would be, no kidding.
He's really actually in favor of it. We, uh, went on a tour, um, probably three weeks ago with him, and he, he's really interested in helping us in that manner. So, uh, we, I just wanted to bring it up because we're trying to work with Mr. Palmer on that, and, and we're really interested.
Great, that would be nice, yeah.
Do you have any other questions, suggestions, comments, limericks for us?
One joke, but you don't want to hear.
Anybody here, Alara?
I just, um, want to thank you all for coming, and I think it's a good idea that we're going to start meeting regularly again. I think we're going to be doing quarterly meetings, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And whatever information you need, just let us know, we'll send it.
Thank you for the agenda items.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Great, enjoy it. Thank you.